Welcome. Welcome. I'd like to call this June 24th Board of Education meeting to order. Adam, please call the roll.
Ms. Hoffman.
Here.
Ms. Conklin.
Here.
Mr. Feller.
Here.
Mrs. Johnson.
Here.
Mrs. Lavallette is absent.
Please rise her pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Since Dr. Motley is not able to be here, we are going to move directly to commendations. We will not have a superintendent's report tonight.
Thanks, Jill. Moving on to item 3.1, commendations and recommendations, or recognition of achievement. First of all, I'd just like the Board of Education to recognize a list of Northview and Southview students in your agenda who have had a score of 26 or above on the ACT or 600 above on the SAT. Following that, we obviously have a large number of Northview and Southview students here this evening that we are excited to recognize, give commendations to, and give recognition for their outstanding athletic achievements this past spring. What I'm going to do is I'm going to invite Vice President Jill Johnson to the podium with me. We will call you up one by one, even if you're a part of a team, we'll call you one by one, where you will receive your recognition, your certificate, and we will also have an opportunity for parents and/or guests for a photo op. So, Ms. Johnson, if you want to join me down at the podium. So our first commendation goes to the 2024 NLL Buckeye Division Baseball Champion, Northview Wildcats. When I call your name, please come forward, wait here, we'll get a group picture, and we will start with Hayden Baker. Vin Bentley. Christian Burling. Ben Berry. Connor Draper. Keegan Draper. Preston Gering. Carson Holmes. Vincent Joliffe. Nick Kozarowski. Roman McCaras. Charlie Paulson. Gabe Peace. Nick Shantz. Josh Springer. Braden Thrush. And Colin Tomansky. Gavin Smith's on there, okay? Gavin Smith. Before we move on to recognizing the coaches, I also want to recognize the 2024 NLL Buckeye Division Baseball Player of the Year, as well as being selected First Team All-District and Second Team All-Ohio honors to Vin Bentley. Come on back up, Vin. Vin, he just walked up here, right here. He's up here. We'll get to Coach Tullis in a second. Want to recognize Assistant Coach Tony Pollak. Come on up, Tony. And finally, the Board of Education would like to commend the 2024 NLL Buckeye Division Baseball Coach of the Year, head coach Aaron Tullis. You should get two there, yeah. Yep. Get in here for a picture somehow. Amy will line us up. Once again, congratulations to our 2024 NLL Champion, Northview Baseball Team. Well done, gentlemen. Our next commendation by the Board of Education is for being selected as the 2024 NLL Buckeye Division Boys Tennis Player of the Year and the 2024 Boys Tennis Sectional Champion to Northview's Max Forker. Is Max here? Come on up, Max. Congratulations, Max. We'll get a picture with Max. We'd also like to recognize, even though they called ahead and said they wouldn't be in attendance, and I know not everybody could be here this evening, but we're still going to recognize everyone. We have a couple of individuals from Southview High School tennis players who are actually competing in Indianapolis today in some doubles competition. They qualified to move forward last night, so they're obviously there today. And we want to recognize the OHSA State Tennis Tournament Division One Doubles Qualifiers to Southview students Isaac and Landon Venz. Round of applause for them. Our next commendation by the Board of Education is for qualifying for the Ohio High School Athletic Association State Track and Field Meet in the 300-meter hurdles, 110-meter hurdles, and long jump, as well as earning First Team All-Ohio in the 110- and 300-meter hurdles to Southview's Logan Howell. Logan not here? He's not here. Board would also like to commend, as a state qualifier for the OHSA Track and Field Meet in the 1600-meter run, to Southview's Benjamin Tucker. Ben's not here. Next commendation, who was a state Track and Field Meet qualifier, as well as earned First Team All-Ohio honors in long jump, goes to Southview's Miranda Bottles. Miranda's not here. The Board commends an OHSA State Track and Field Meet qualifier and First Team All-Ohio recipient in the 800-meter run to Northview's Harper Brighty. Our next commendation goes to a qualifier at the Ohio High School Athletic Association State Track and Field Championships in the 1600-meter run to Northview's Brody Hubbard. And last but certainly not least, the Sylvan Board of Education commends for qualifying at the OHSA Track and Field Championships in the 400-meter run to Northview's Mailey Roberts. Mailey here? All right, let's give one more round of applause to all of our student athletes and their accomplishments here today. Perfect, we'll go on up.
Congratulations, everyone.
Congratulations. I would like to recommend to the Board of Education, item 3.1, the commendations and recognition and acknowledgement of outstanding achievement by our spring student athletes and ACT and SAT scores here this evening.
I'll move approval on item 3.1.
I'll second.
Adam, call the roll, please.
Julie.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Jill.
Yes.
Once again, congratulations. I know it's a beautiful evening out. I know you probably all have more important things to do. You're more than welcome to stay for the remainder of our board meeting, but at this time, if you would like to leave, you may be dismissed. Thank you and congratulations again.
Didn't get a lot of people to stay. Oh, God, he's got the other.
Okay, okay.
Next on the agenda is public participation for agenda items. And seeing them, do we have some?
Right, I think, yes, she has some.
We do have one, Dan Greenberg.
Spin that around if you need to. You can turn it, yeah, it shouldn't move yet.
You don't want to stand with your back to us?
4654 Vicksburg Drive, Sylvan. I am here speaking as an individual regarding the recommendation on redistricting. And I am, I'll start out by saying that I am, my ask of you is to consider tabling this motion, the policy, at this time. I just found out about this a little bit ago, so pardon.
Dan, is it redistricting or open enrollment?
I apologize, open enrollment.
That's so.
A little bit, you know, yeah. Thank you, thanks for the clarification, yeah, open enrollment. I have a few thoughts that I wanted to share with you from a perspective as a parent, as well as a teacher in the district, and wearing both of those hats. The first piece is, my daughters all have gone through Sylvan and what that has meant for them as an experience. And by the way, let me step back for a second and say this. There was an acknowledgement several years ago during, you know, that we needed to address the inequality in student enrollment or the disparity in student enrollment between the two high schools. We saw there were problems. There was clearly an issue with this large disparity. And so, we put in a policy that exists now. And I truly believe, from my perspective as a parent and as a teacher in the district, that we are only going to open ourselves back up to the problems that caused us to have to implement this policy in the first place. I liken it to, if you have a dog that's been in your yard and you fenced it in the yard for five years and it was going all right and the dog never left, you take the fence off, it's going to go back to the way it was before. And I'm speaking as a Sylvan parent from this space, and I hope you can understand where I'm coming from. Kids want to go to school where their friends go to school. That's what they want. I think of how important, you know your own kids. Sylvan is, goes to McCord. Sylvan feeds right in there. And it's about 70/30, maybe, in terms of the percentage of students who are from Highland, who ultimately then go on to Northview. The Sylvan kids make friends with this large group of students who are Highland, Northview kids, and when they have the opportunity to open enroll, they will open enroll. It's what we saw. It was where a big chunk of the disparity was that started the policy to curb open enrollment at Northview. I guarantee you it will happen again, especially when you think, in the reality, as a parent in that building. It is a Northview-centric building at McCord. More of the students go to Northview in the end. When it comes to things like band concerts and giving kids access, the Sylvan kids often get a short shrift. It's interesting how year in and year out, those Sylvan students, or the students at McCord who are getting ready to go from eighth grade and ninth grade and want to look at the band, it's always interesting that the Northview kids get the sheet music and all the information, and they are ready to go. But the Southview kids, a smaller number of them, the Sylvan kids, don't. And they find out last minute and they feel left out. And it was, I can speak to all three of my kids. My oldest went through this, went through when the redistricting thing had just been put into effect to curtail some of that movement. And among her, like, among her friends, she really had to create her own friend group at Southview. Her lifetime friends that she had gone through Sylvan with all went to Northview. Their siblings went to Northview. It is going to be, I know there has been a movement towards an increase in student population at Central Trail and a little bit of a decrease at Highland, but I can tell you that regardless of that piece, that the Sylvan kids will now move in large mass, I am sure of it, to Northview if you put this policy in place. The other piece that I want to talk about from a district continuity and program of studies is this. When we had this big disparity before, there were some real problems in Southview in terms of continuity of programming. We had, for example, I think in four years, three different journalism and yearbook teachers. Because when the Northview student population increased, we had to move a halftime English department position to Northview, and no one wanted to be that split person. And so, we just had all this churn in our programs because Southview had to shift staff over to Northview. Which brings me to another piece of it, which is to solve the problem, what the district did besides making this policy change at the time, was they implemented, they hired more teachers. They said, "We recognize that this is a problem, we've got to fix. In order to put, to stop the bleed, we have to hire several more teachers at Southview to keep them full-time there, so that Southview is not continually churning teachers and losing continuity of program." In the end, this kind of policy cost the district more money when it was implemented before. I really do firmly believe, regardless of where population shifts are at this moment of school-aged children, I believe firmly, as a parent, as a teacher, as someone who has seen this go through, you're going to see with this policy, a resurgence of that disparity between Northview and Southview in terms of the student population. And so, I ask you, this is, we're talking about 25, 26 school year. I ask you just to table it for, so that there can be additional discussion before passing this change in the open enrollment policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. All right, we are now moving on to the Treasures Report.
All right, 5.1, we did have one board member not in attendance that, so if we could do that as a standalone and then do 5.2 to 5.8 in consent, I would appreciate that. So 5.1 was just the minutes from June 10th.
I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
Comments or discussion? Adam, could you please call the roll?
Kim.
Yes.
Julie.
Yes.
Jill.
Yes.
Greg.
I'm staying.
All right, so 5.2, we have minutes from May 20th. 5.3 is my Treasures Report. In July, if not the first meeting in August, I'll do a recap, a short presentation on the ending of the fiscal year, which is at the end of this week. So, my office is busy tidying everything up and getting ready for the new year with the new budgets and whatnot. But I did also include some links in my update this month with another report that I'm doing called a Popular Annual Financial Report. So we'll hopefully have that ready to go sometime in the month of August. Availability of funds, we did have a few this month. We had a purchase order. We did blanket purchase orders and we had one that, we needed to get a new one in, and it didn't catch a few of those. So that's why you'll see more than normal there. 5.5 is Ohio School Plan. We're going to stick with the Ohio School Plan this year. I did take it out to market and get another quote from Huntington Insurance, which is our bank. It did come in substantially higher, so we're going to stick with Ohio School Plan, which is through Highland, and they do the majority of school insurance policies throughout the state. They do a really nice job for us.
How much of that premium was a, how much is it higher this year than last year?
It's about $50,000. So, we did a full reappraisal this year. It hasn't been done in six years. We're going to take 50% of the increase in the value this year. We'll take the next 50% in the following year. 5.6 is just Aspire, which is an annual MOU with Penta through the state of Ohio. They're the group that did a presentation a couple months ago. 5.7 is, I handed these out, 5.7, 5.8, at your table there, is the Final Appropriations and Amendment Certificate for our fiscal year '24. And then, hard to believe, we're already in fiscal year '25 already, but 5.8 is the Temporary Appropriations Amendment Certificate for FY '25.
I'll move approval on a consent agenda basis. Items 5.2 through 5.8.
Second.
Any discussion or comments? Call the roll, please, Adam.
Julie.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Jill.
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
And to you, Mr. Zero.
Thank you. I'd like to recommend item 6.1, which is a redistricting recommendation for the Quarry Ridge development commencing 2024, 2025.
I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
Any comments, any questions?
We've been in touch with all the families, right? I mean, I know what we're doing.
I'm not positive that we have. I think we were waiting on this approval before that happens. I know, working and communicating with Melissa McDonald, our Student Services Director, instead of just a blanket email that says, "Hey, here's what's going on next year", she was planning, I think there are 13 students. She's planning on making some personal phone calls and explaining the process and the reasoning for it with those families. I know that hasn't started.
And I know the developer was talked to.
Yes, I do know that.
So there's the contact with the developer, whether he passed it on.
So there's awareness.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Adam, call the roll, please.
Greg.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Jill.
Yes.
Julie.
Yes.
Thank you. Item 6.2, policy for a second read for intra-district open enrollment and grandfathering.
Since this is a second read, do we actually vote on it? Or is there a third read where we actually vote?
No, this is the time.
We would vote on this read.
Do it on the second one.
I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
Questions, comments?
Yeah, I mean, based on, you know, we heard some feedback. Make no mistake, I've never been shy about, I think there should be open enrollment to the high schools. I've always thought that. I didn't like when we changed it. I understood it, because we had real disparity. Northview numbers are really high, Southview were lower, and now they're more in line. But, you know, based on the feedback, are you still comfortable recommending that we approve this?
Based on communication in central office, I know we need to have administrative guidelines to help alleviate some of those concerns that were discussed. I know Dr. Motley does have those plans in place. We don't want it to turn into a situation that we had six, seven years ago while this policy was put in place where only, you could only open enroll to one high school versus the other unless you fell into like three or four buckets. But I'm confident that the procedures, administrative guidelines, and process that she has in place would follow through with what the recommendation is.
My, go ahead.
I was going to say, those, I haven't seen those procedures. I kind of like, I would mind seeing those before we approve it.
The administrative guidelines?
Yeah, like what the guidelines that will govern.
Yeah, and I don't have those exactly. I know she has limitations. You know, we're not going to let one high school go to 2,200 and one drop to 400.
Yeah, I was told there was going to be a cap every year.
Yes.
I guess I don't understand the concern. Sylvan was not, this redistricting happened at the same time as, I know Northview was overcrowded. I thought that's why we shut down open enrollment. The whole redistricting thing happened at the same time we shut down open enrollment. And I kind of like the idea of giving those Sylvan kids the choice. I do understand there's other concerns. We don't want a mass wave and for it to trip the other way, which is why I thought there was going to be caps. So, by the administrative guidelines. And we typically, administrative guidelines come down after the board policy is enacted, not before. I mean.
Well.
Well, I'd kind of like to see the guidelines, I mean, I'm sure there's got to be a draft of them. I'd like to, I'd like to at least see before we approve it. Because I do think, you know, there's a possibility that we could get a bunch of people open and rolling to Northview and it could shift things back to.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but part of the issue prior was Highland has always typically been our school that has been, you know, it was like bigger than our junior high schools.
The enrollment was so high, and now Highland's dropping.
Highland is dropping.
And Central Trail's going up, and that's a Southview school, or Highland is the Northview theater pattern. So, I think that has something to do with it, too.
Correct, yeah. When this was put into place, we, our variance between the two buildings was, I want to say, 300 to 350. Next year, anticipated projections are anywhere from 100 to 125. So that's gotten a lot closer for the reasons I know what Julie has said. Central Trail's our largest building now.
And growth is out there.
And it's continuing to grow.
And on the flip side, I don't want to see it go the other way, where Southview's 300 or 400 more either.
Correct.
Well, we've already, we've allowed open enrollment in Southview. We just shut it down to Northview, which has caused issues for, I mean.
Just for me, I kind of like to see the guidelines.
We're just making it equal at this point. Everybody has the opportunity, and there'll be caps in place to make sure overcrowding doesn't happen. I mean, what do you want the administrative guidelines to?
I just want to see if there's caps, what are the caps, or what?
So, are you asking to table it today, that we table it for further conversation until you can review that? Because I don't think we have the guidelines here.
No, we don't have them. I wouldn't mind tabling it to see what the, I'm not saying I'm against it. I would just like to see what the, what's going to govern, what we're going to prove.
Does the policy answer your, answer those questions?
No.
Because I think.
There's no guidelines in the policy.
There's no caps.
I know, but there are.
It just allows it.
It's pretty, it's pretty, to me, it's pretty tight. The policy lends to, I think, what those guidelines are going to be.
Well, the policy will set up, give the authority for administration to set up guidelines.
Right.
But there's no, the policy doesn't have any numbers or anything.
And I guess my point is, I just, I'm not opposed to the policy, I just don't know. As far as I know, it's a free-for-all. Anyone can apply wherever they want. At this point in time, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean.
If there is a cap, what's the cap? Are we going to allow 10 students a year? Are we going to allow 100 students a year?
Well, I think it depends on the numbers each year, and, you know, do they have other people there? I mean, I think it's reasonable, if you're not comfortable, we shouldn't move forward. And we have time. I mean, we're going to meet again in a couple weeks. And, you know, Dr. Motley wasn't here to hear the comments, you know, and, you know, to address if there's anything.
Well, and this is the first time I've heard of a cap.
Yeah, I think we talked about it the first time.
Yeah, we talked about it in the first read and.
Yeah, during the first.
And I think there was even a number.
Right.
I wasn't here the last meeting.
To be fair, Greg was not at that meeting.
You're supposed to do your backup homework after you come back off your vacation.
Well, I would move that we table it for further consideration.
So, we have a motion pending, so we need to, somebody needs to withdraw the motion, is that what?
Yeah.
Or we're going to vote it down, or?
Withdraw the, withdraw the motion, and then we'll make a motion to table it. And then next meeting, we'll have to make a motion to untable it, and then vote.
So since I made the motion, do I have to make the motion? What if I don't want to? I'll make a motion to withdraw.
I mean, if you don't want to, then two of us vote and go into.
Right, then we vote. All right, I withdraw the motion, we'll table it. I'm good with that.
I then will withdraw my second.
Okay, then I move we table this.
I'll second.
Hold on, hold on.
Try to keep up, Adam.
Keep up, Adam, come on.
I need to call the roll for the, withdraw the motion.
Thank you.
Well, I guess I don't have to make a roll call to withdraw the motion. Well, I guess I don't have to make a roll call to withdraw the motion. All right, so...
You're in charge.
Julie, Greg, first, second, right?
Yes.
Any, any further discussion to tabling it?
Julie?
Adam?
Greg?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Jill?
No.
All right, Item 6.3 is an MOU for a Stranahan kindergarten teacher for the 24, 25 school year. Basically, the MOU states it's a one-year kindergarten teaching position at Stranahan.
I'll move approval.
A second.
Any further comments or discussion? Adam, please call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Thank you, and Item 6.4, An Agreement with Tangible Habits, this is for ESY Services for a student this summer based on their IEP.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Discussion or comments? Adam, please call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Tversky.
Thank you, I will recommend approval of Items 7.1 through 7.3 on a consent agenda basis. 7.1, Our Licensed New Teachers. 7.2 is Licensed Extra Duty. And 7.3 are Licensed Resignations.
Move approval on a consent agenda basis, Items 7.1 through 7.3.
Discussion, comments?
Thank you to Crystal Burnworth for her years of service. And Kennedy Crawford, did we get a replacement for that? Because we have two Stranahan kindergarten teachers out.
We'll post it, probably post it, and then we'll seek, seek a new candidate.
Julie?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Thank you, I will recommend Items 8.1 through 8.3 on a consent agenda basis. 8.1, Classified Summer Position. 8.2 are Classified Personnel Changes. And 8.3 is a Classified New Hire.
I'll move approval on a consent agenda basis, Items 8.1 through 8.3.
Second.
Comments or questions? Adam? Oops, sorry, go ahead, Kim.
Jeremy Hitler, Justin Hitler's son?
Brother.
Brother, okay. Just curious.
I was wondering about that, too. Any other questions or comments? Adam, please call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Thought maybe he was putting his kid to work for the summer.
Hey, I know a guy we're hiring. We'll get him.
Always a good point.
Yeah, thank you, I recommend Items 9.1 through 9.4 on a consent agenda basis. 9.1 are Licensed Supplemental Positions for the 23, 24 school year. 9.2 are Supplemental Positions for the 24, 25 school year. And 9.3 are recommendations for Non Teaching Pupil Activity Contracts and Their Resolutions for the 24, 25 school year. These are coaches slash advisors who are nonlicensed teachers, so the wording is a little bit different, but we're hoping to cross some more Ts and dot some more Is with this process. And 9.4, thank you, Mr. Feller. Changes and Corrections, Resignations to the Supplementals for the 24, 25 school year.
I'll move for approval on a consent agenda basis, Items 9.1 to 9.4.
Questions or comments? Oh, we do need a second, we need a second.
I'll second.
Questions or comments?
I like this new system, we're going to get other people in and approved in this different way, I like this.
Yeah, it opens the door for some of our great people that we already employ to allot in the coach, so we've been working on it for a while, thanks to Mr. Koch, and some contacts that he's made, we've figured out a way to do it, so it's exciting.
Good job, Adam.
Good job, Adam.
Good job, Adam.
Attaboy.
Any other comments?
Part of the team.
Adam?
Greg?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is Board Reports, Kim?
We had a communications meeting this week, hence the two people not here. I survived, so far. I think Veronica said in soup notes, it's basically, we're looking to make the board page of the website more user-friendly, to be more transparent as far as ease to get to the board agenda, the board docs, you know, and we've kind of been looking at some other surrounding districts and getting some ideas, and basically, you know, all that's up there right now, prominent, is our board bios, and they're, you know, we're all fine, but that's really not the important stuff, so probably try to give more information on what the board does, and so if you guys have any feedback on that, let us know, or let Veronica know. And that's, SSPOs, we're retired for the summer, and that's all I've got.
Okay, Greg?
Nothing new.
Julie?
Had a Sylvanian Prevention Alliance meeting last week, maybe the week before, not a lot going on, but they are having, like, two sessions on August 6th, like a large event, like, for mental and emotional self-management, for, like, target group is like K-12, so I think it'll be in Northview in the morning and Southview in the afternoon, so I think they're trying to push, you've probably heard about it, they're trying to push it out to get students there, so, that's probably, oh, and Dana Open is coming up, so anybody who wants to volunteer, we are doing a concession stand, so anybody who wants to volunteer, let me know.
What event is coming up?
Dana Open, in July, at Highland Meadows.
What weekend is that?
It's July 18th to the 21st. It's lots of fun, just, you know, I did it last year, it was...
We're in a tournament in Castilla that weekend.
I'll be out there pouring some beer.
All right, I had a Sylvanian Community Services Program Committee meeting, nothing new to add, we're just working on program development and answering some questions and working out some kinks for the preschool. Okay, next is Public Participation for Non Agenda Items.
We're probably good, everybody left.
Seeing none. I would like to adjourn, we will not have an executive session today, that will be rescheduled for a future date. Sorry, I am.
Oh, I thought you said you. I was trying to help.
Second.
I'd like to...